I don't know where it is.
Call this meeting to order. Uh, we'd all rise. Commissioner Linier, would you lead us some prayer?
Definitely Father, we ask that you watch over the citizens of San Juan County. We also ask that you watch over our fire department and our sheriff as they work hard to protect us. I ask that you look over those folks on the east coast. Uh, the first responders out there, all of the volunteers, the linemen. Just everybody that is having to deal with with the hurricane that went through North Carolina. And that one that just passed, both of them that just passed through Florida. And we, we just asked that you take care of those people and help us find those that are missing. In your name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Sam Gonzalez, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which stands our nation under thy indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to a presentation. Uh, by Chief Vega.
Good afternoon, Commission. Uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, I appreciate the opportunity to publicly acknowledge the accomplishments of Fire Lieutenant Ryan Varnell. Lieutenant Varnell has completed all academic requirements to achieve the National Fire Academy's Managing Officer Program Certificate of Completion. And in doing so, has demonstrated a commitment to professional development. The National Fire Academy's Managing Officer Program is a multi-year curriculum that introduces emergency service leaders to personal and professional skills and change management, risk reduction and leadership. The Managing Officer Program provides first level fire officers with an opportunity to develop professionally, improve their supervisory skills and meet emerging professional challenges. In addition to all of his academic requirements, Lieutenant Varnell also submitted a capstone project uh, that in which he identified steps to improve firefighter mental health through peer support. And uh, with that capstone, we'll develop policies and procedures uh, to help us manage uh, some of the psychological trauma that comes with this job. So uh, it was a really good capstone project that uh, he completed and, and it's going to make a difference in our department for sure. Lieutenant Varnell joins just a handful of managing officer program graduates uh, here in, here in New Mexico. We're pretty fortunate that we have two in San Juan County. Uh, Division Chief Herrera completed his uh, managing officer uh, a couple of years ago now. So we're fortunate that uh, and just the handful, two of those uh, belong to San Juan County. So we're pretty proud of that. So. Uh, at this time, I do wish to congratulate Lieutenant Varnell on his achievement and uh, thank him for his service to the citizens of San Juan County. Uh, Lieutenant Varnell is stationed in our Bloomfield Station, so he also serves the citizens of Bloomfield. And uh, at this time, I'd ask Lieutenant Varnell to come up to the podium and be recognized. You can show off your, your plaque uh, to the crowd and the commission and I'll let you say a few words. Uh, he didn't know who's going to be put on the spot here, but.
Some of that training to work.
Yeah.
Um, I really appreciate the opportunity to go out to Maryland and um, get this education that I did receive. I appreciate um, the recognition that I'm getting here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, Joe, take a picture?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And I would just like to acknowledge Chief Varnell's fiancee and families in the audience. And it's always special when family can uh, be part of this. So want to thank uh, Lieutenant Varnell's family showing up.
If I could grab a picture here.
Thank you. Thank you, Commission.
All right, that brings us to our uh, regular meeting and the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, there is a recommended change uh, tonight on new business agenda item number two. Uh, the community development department received word uh, that we're not ready uh, for final plot approval. The engineer um, still needs to meet with the city of Farmington before they come over here. And so we would request this move, uh, item be removed from tonight's agenda and we'll bring it back to you when they're ready to proceed.
Very well, I'll stand for a motion.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, I presume it passed unanimously. So that brings us to the consent agenda, item number one, consideration of treasurer check register for September 2024. Uh, consideration of finance check registers for September 2024. Consideration of fiscal year budget adjustment number four, resolution number twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty-two. Number four, consideration of resolution number twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty-one, supporting New Mexico Department of Transportation Award of Kaylinda Grant uh, program funding. Item number five, consideration of ratification of volunteer fire assistance grant application. Item number six, consideration for renewal of proposal number twenty-three, twenty-four, zero, four. Volunteer firefighter insurance with USI Southwest of Albuquerque, New Mexico. Lastly, item number seven, consideration of resolutions numbered twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty-five, supporting the New Mexico DOT 2024 Local Government Road Fund Cooperative Agreement Extensions.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, not hearing any, I presume it passed unanimously. Brings us to item number one, uh, which is a uh, presentation of the 2024 uh, San Juan County Needs Assessment, uh, brought to us by the San Juan County Partnership Executive Director, Director Anna Krest. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Got this, okay. I'm short. Um, okay, so I'm going to do some reading, which I don't usually do, but this is going to be the fastest way to get a lot of information to you all. So we are here to present the 2024 San Juan County Needs Assessment. I'm Anna Krestky, the Executive Director of San Juan County Partnership, and with me is Amanda Evans, the Director of Prevention Programming and um, the, our San Juan Health Council. Uh, the needs assessment was commissioned by San Juan County, the city of Farmington, San Juan United Way, and the San Juan Health Council. We first want to very briefly review how the assessment was done. This information is covered in the introduction of the assessment. So you will see that we have the assessment up. You all have a copy here, so you can follow along with me. Uh, the data for the assessment, for the assessment included, um, one, a resident needs assessment survey with an incredible response of sixteen hundred, more than ever than we've ever had before. Um, and includes approximately fourteen hundred online and two hundred paper surveys to reach more rural areas, including areas on the Navajo Nation, which we have not been able to do historically. And populations less likely to complete an online survey such as those experiencing homelessness. And we got a good representation from geographic areas across the county. We also conducted a key informant survey, asking leaders, stakeholders, stakeholders and service providers to rate and describe what they think are the most important issues and concerns. And we conducted six structured focus groups with stakeholders and community levers, leaders on specific topics. For example, crime, education, transportation, and so on. And some of you were involved in those. On the table of contents. You can see, move to that one, um, that data are organized by topic. Every section includes the following, ratings and results from the resident survey. Graphs and tables of data from the US Census, the Department of Health, uh, CDC, the Centers for Disease Control, Public Education Department, and many other state and national sources. A summary of the focus group for the topic ratings and written comments from the key informant surveys. And there is a key findings summary at the end of each section that can really help to get oriented to the main points in each section. These data are intended to be a resource for planning, for people doing funding applications across the county and things of that nature. We'd like to draw your attention to the next page, one oh seven. The first section of the resident survey asked respondents to rate how much of a priority each of twenty-seven issues from not a priority, no additional focus is needed, to high priority, much more focus and attention is needed. You can see from this graph, the top issues that are on people's minds, reducing violent crime, attending to the emerging needs of education, as well as employment in the economy, housing and mental health services. The next page, page one oh eight shows priority ratings by different areas of the county. The overall ratings are similar, but there are some interesting patterns as well. Just going to give you a second to kind of take that page in. It's a lot of information. So another question on the resident survey asked, what they think are the community strengths? We really tried to do a lot of, of work to stay strength focused um, this time around. Starting on page one oh nine, there is a graph of the most frequent comments for each area of the county, along with representative quotes. So I think one of the most important things that we uh, came across in this was the amount of public comment that we received under reach each topic area. And at some point, I think it would be really helpful for everybody to, to kind of take in some of those and see what people are talking about. But if you skip to um, page one twelve, at the bottom, there is a graph of the overall county strengths. And we did some comparison. Um, so compared to the same question in 2016, there was a much greater recognition and appreciation for each other, for getting through difficult times and for supportive caring people across the county, for the helping programs and service providers who help people get healthcare, housing, food assistance, shelter, and for law enforcement. Appreciation for law enforcement's role in helping people feel safe, for keeping us abreast of what is happening, for reaching out to communicate with and support the community. Now, am I going too fast or you guys are doing okay? Pace is okay? Okay. Um, let's look at page, um, next at page one eighteen. After they rated a hundred and six different items, key informants were asked to describe what they think are the most and second most important areas we need to approve, improve, or expand. The top issue is mental health services. So I know that this is not a surprise for many of you. They also described transportation, affordable housing, and substance use services as top priorities. One of the main tasks of a needs assessment is to look at all of the data and identify these priorities. There is a summary beginning on page one twenty-one that describes what emerged as the top five priorities. Each section provides specifics about San Juan County. In the area of reducing crime, crime data does highlight this as a priority across New Mexico and across San Juan County. Respondents on the survey called for crime prevention programs and for creating safer community contexts. From security lights to increased police presence in neighborhoods. And as we said, there was a lot of appreciation for what law enforcement is already doing. We know that there's a lot of empty positions that need to be filled in many of these areas, which is one of our concerns. In the area of education, once again, education data such as graduation rates and proficiency data, support this as a priority. School attendance is identified as a national, state, and county-wide concern. Students have not returned to school at the same level prior to the pandemic. This is an area we could learn more about from teachers, parents, and students themselves. In jobs and economics, there were several suggestions about what types of jobs residents think are needed with a high priority on job training and on jobs in trades and skilled labor. The difficulty affording basic essentials has grown significantly since 2016. So 2016 is the last time we did a, a, an assessment of this um, level. So that's why we are referencing the one that we did in 2020 was much more key informant, smaller, um, focused on service needs um, and providers. Residents and key informants called for the need to grow the economy and increase jobs that pay a living wage. Mental health services were a priority among residents and key informants, including needs for crisis services and inpatient facilities. And similar to healthcare in general, there is a need for more providers at all levels, from counselors to psychiatrists. And again, we do know as a community, many of us in community leaders, that these are issues that we have already started to work on across the county. We also noted that residents are experiencing higher levels of stress. And yet, compared to 2016, they have not fully resumed their usual high level of engaging in activities that support their well-being, such as spending time with friends and family. In written comments, there was a great deal of desire for supportive, safe community gatherings. This is an area we can all work on improving. And again, read the comments on these. It gives, there's some interesting ideas. Finally, there is a need to continue focusing on creating affordable and available housing. From shelters for those experiencing homelessness through affordable housing, particularly rental housing. In this section, we highlight other census and survey data that shows a high level of need for housing support. Again, not necessarily new information, but really important as a good, as a reminder. In addition to the top five priorities, we also describe two themes that emerged across topic areas. First, being the desire for a safe community, and the second being the role of substance use. Finally, on the very last page, we draw on selected quotes to point to the ways in which San Juan County is a resilient community. Again, with people supporting one another, abundance of helping programs, and strong law enforcement and leadership across the community. I will stand for some questions if anyone has any. And I, I recognize this is a lot to take in, but it is, you know, expected that this will be a resource over the next four years that many people across the, the county can utilize to make some positive changes.
Okay. So thank you for all this information, and there is a lot, but it's all good information. And um, I liked on page uh, one twenty-seven, when it talks about there are indicators of resilient community. Because also where you're saying that people appreciate the help in the communities, you see so many uh, not-for-profit and all, as well as for-profit, and people trying to really figure out how to help people. And also organizations that are trying to bring people out, uh, not be isolated, to really say, come out and get involved. Cause sometimes it's hard to know how to reengage after you've been isolated for so long.
Yeah. And, and you know, I think over the past year, um, I think we are seeing an increase in that engagement. I have seen an increase. I think there are more people getting out. Um, and I think what I think is really important to um, underscore is that all of the nonprofits and for-profits within the community really work incredibly well together and work to address issues that maybe one group, you know, there, there may be a, a, a sort of a hole somewhere and people are coming together and organizations are coming together to try to address those.
I agree, and that's really important, not just to be redundant, but to meet needs. So you're not just clashing on
Exactly.
raising money and all that type of stuff, because there's a huge need. And, and I just wanted to make note that uh, we have a strategic plan, as you know, for the county. And so supportive law enforcement, increased economic opportunities, that we work with Forset for that.
Yes.
Um, that's a great opportunity for us. And then affordable housing is something that we've worked with at the uh, Mental Wellness Resource Center.
You know that, you're working with Megan.
And then increased behavioral health services that work in on the Crisis Triage Center as well. So falls really in line. So it's nice to see it in black and white.
I agree.
How we all come to the same conclusion.
Yeah, we are on the right path. And you know, the, the, the issues that have been raised that the community is concerned about, almost every one of those, we can show where there is improvement or work happening. So that's a good thing. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Um, just a comment. Um, uh, District Two has thirteen chapters and District fourteen chapters. And District um, one has four chapters.
Yes.
And this information seems like it would really be beneficial to the chapter government.
Yes.
There was one comment I saw on there where it said, the chapters to get together and provide services as a group instead of each individual chapters. But this kind of indicates what's happening within the county. So um, I don't know if you just freely give it to the chapters or if you go to a northern agency meeting, or if somebody goes to a chapter meeting and presents it. Uh, because this, this is really good and interesting information. Like the thing on transportation, I always see people hitchhiking. And it's not like the old days where you were kind and you picked up somebody, but now it's not a violence, you don't dare do it. But I see people, maybe they're hitchhiking to their job or to, for schooling. And yet, there's, there's no public transportation. Now, Navajo Nation has uh, Navajo Transit, but you hardly see anybody inside it. So, and I don't know how, it seems like they could coordinate to where they have a, a schedule, start and stop, stop, and the times. And that's something that I think needs to be looked at.
Transportation is definitely one of the top priorities that needs to be addressed without a question. And we are just starting our roadshow, so we will do presentations. We will be um, bringing um, copies out to chapter houses so that they each have a copy. And um, we will present at any group that is interested in learning more.
Do you do an assessment every year?
No, every four years.
Every four years.
Correct. Based on funding. This was an expensive endeavor.
Yeah, it is.
It took, it took almost, it took ten months to complete, start to finish. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, Anna, I've, I've been fortunate enough to get to work with you.
Thanks.
Few years now. You and your staff do a great job. The partners do fantastic. It's awesome. I do have a question on the surveys, because I see the surveys in the back of the book.
Yes.
So did everybody get all of those surveys, or did they just?
So there is one section that was specific to the city of Farmington to support their uh, the block grant funding that they were applying for. So we actually added some questions in Farmington, specific to housing for block grant funding, so that they could uh, apply, and we got some of that information cleaned up and out to them quicker than we did to, to every, before we did to everybody else.
I apologize if you were answered this. How many surveys did you send out?
Uh, how many did we send out? Well, we, it's, what I have is collection. So we collected sixteen hundred. So in terms of set, we put it out online. So we put it out uh, through um, a QR code. We put it out through social media, the newspaper, we had it posted all over the county. And then we took paper surveys out to some of the chapter houses and to other areas that may not have access to internet.
And the reason I ask is because the numbers are low.
Higher than they've ever been before. Yeah. I think in, uh, before, the, these were completed. We had over two thousand that started it that may have not completed it.
Yeah, because I mean, sometimes we get out surveyed.
Yeah, and we did give incentives.
We get, we get sued. And then my last question, I promise, is, is there any point in there where you break down age?
Yes. Isn't there a demographic in age?
Old high school teachers, so I worry about the youngest, and then.
Yeah, and I think.
My parents, I don't see that.
Is there a spot where we?
My parents are getting, I wonder what the age.
Yeah, we did do, there was. If I cannot answer that question now, I will get it to you, because no, that's important information. Yeah, definitely. Okay. I thought we did, but maybe it was more economics and.
Again, I think.
You are quite welcome.
Any other questions, comments?
Another comment was that um, serve, helping services on the, the Navajo Nation, they're just not there. Cause I remember a young man who went to, he's a Navajo guy, and he went to Albuquerque. And uh, he says, they provide more things for me than they do on the nation. And his family keeps telling him to come back. I mean, he's an excellent artist and he could make money with. And he could make money with his artwork, his sculptures and whatnot. But he, you know, just bums out there in Albuquerque. But he says, I like it there because they give, they have all those services.
So, yeah, Albuquerque has more services than any other part of the state. Uh, Navajo Nation, like the rest of the county, is struggling with having enough providers to provide the service, the, 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 the services needed. So same issues, not enough law enforcement, not enough medical providers, not enough behavioral health providers. So similar issues, and then transportation again. So I think you see sort of a, a, a microcosm of the larger issue, but it's just smaller amounts.
Homelessness, sometimes I wonder, is, are these transient people? Or is that our own county residents who end up on the streets?
Most of them are the own county residents, but there are details that I'm sure that might could get you some of the specifics. So it's a combination of, of both. But so we do have some transient movement through the whole region, in the whole four states area. And we have a lot of people who are struggling to maintain themselves, who are residents of the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome.
Item two, having been taken off, brings us to item three, which is consideration of Resolution number twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty, supporting Operation Green Light for veterans as presented by Commissioner Fortner.
Hey, thank you. So Operation Green Light was originally sent out to all of the New Mexico counties by the National Association of Counties. And we started doing this within the last couple of years, I think. And if you drive by, or even now, you can see the green around the lights, and you'll see the building lit up in green. During this time, before Veteran Days, supporters of the military can show their support to veterans by displaying a green light in a window of their place or business or residence. So, and you, and online at Amazon, if you want to even go to this extent, you can buy green light bulbs. And then at Christmas time, you can do, to get some red ones and, you know, intersperse the two. So anyway, what I do is I buy the green light bulbs, and here they've wrapped plastic around the existing lights. But is any, if anybody's a veteran, would you raise your hand? Somebody that's in the military, served in the military? Anybody here? Okay. Thank you. And I appreciate your service, and thank you for being here. So I want to make sure that we remember those folks by, by what we say and do. So I don't know, do you want me to read that, or do you just want?
Your, your preference, if you want to, not.
Okay, I'll read it. So, supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas the resident of San Juan County has great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community and the armed forces. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas San Juan County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price of freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion Veterans of Foreign Wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in twenty-nine states to help fellow former service members across more than fifty-two billion dollars in federal health disability and compensation benefits each year. Whereas two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. Whereas studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civil, to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk of suicide during this first year after military service. Whereas the National Association of Counties encourage all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas San Juan County appreciates the sacrifice of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of San Juan County, New Mexico, that San Juan County is hereby designated as a green light for veterans county and declares October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, through Veterans Day, November eleventh, twenty twenty-four, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Be it further resolved that in observation of Operation Green Light, San Juan County encourages its citizens in patriotic, patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in the window of their place of business or residence. So thank you very much for your time.
You heard it, I'll stand for a motion. Or actually, any, any questions, comments? I'll start there, I'm sorry.
I just, I have one comment. It, it is the third year, because Senator and I have been participating all three years. I would just like to, I, I hope the newspaper will get a little something out there, because I, I feel like people drive by and see our green lights, and they're not really sure what it is. And I know Devin does a good job, but ended up on the board and all that good stuff. Some pleadings for maybe a little newspaper already called that, on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. You know, this is the twenty-first century, and you would think that we wouldn't be having wars. Because on television, you see the devastation, you know, all the progress that was made. And then it's just damage and lives lost. And I remember, I think it was the movie Terminator, where he says, the humans haven't learned. And we should be focusing on other things instead of killing people. But wars do happen, and it's kind of a sad thing. As, as young men and young women join the military, and they sacrifice and make a decision. And I'm glad that, you know, you're part of this proclamation. And it, but I always wonder, I remember an older gentleman friend of mine. He, he'd always say wars happen because it gets, we have overpopulation. And I don't know what the governments do, but it's kind of sad to see. But we pray that all that are out there, that they're safe. Because it's, it's interesting how the leaders of some countries, you know, they want to have a, create a bomb. And heaven knows what's going to happen in the future. But for now, you know, we thank everyone who's ever decided that this is what was valued to them, and that we do care about them with the green light. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. Is it, is this a motion that needs to be made?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty?
Yes.
I'll shake it. Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion or questions? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume it passed unanimously. Brings us to item number four, consideration for use of Law Enforcement Recruitment and Retention Fund. It's an action item presented by Sheriff Tanner.
Hey, good, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. And twenty-twenty-two, the San Juan County, I'm sorry, San Juan County was awarded three point one five million dollars to the State Law Enforcement Recruitment and Retention Fund to be distributed over three years. The first year, we got one point eight million, half that the next year, and this year, we are receiving four hundred fifty thousand. This year, same as last, we plan to issue contractual retention bonuses for certified deputies and also sign-on bonuses for new hired deputies. Sign-on bonuses will remain at fifteen thousand dollars, split into two equal installments. With our hiring projections and some second hiring installments pending, the retention bonuses will be reduced to thirty-seven hundred dollars. We will also continue the five thousand dollar referral bonuses to sheriff's office employees who refer a candidate that results in successful full hire of a deputy. In the two years we've been doing this, we've hired ten deputies referred by current employees. I'm sure I have another one in the works right now. So eleven extra cops on the streets through that program. On this referral program and the second installment from the hiring bonuses that fall outside this funding term are funded through salary savings created from this funding, as well as salary savings from this year's four hundred and fifty thousand dollar law enforcement recruitment, recruitment fund. And that fund covers the salaries of any people that we hire and has last year as well. So substantial salary savings to help support this. But that is our general plan, and I stand for any questions.
For any questions?
Mr. Chair, a comment, I guess, from the report by San Juan County leadership. They're praising the, the, the county law enforcement and all the, the, the fire and rescue for what they do. So you do keep our county safe and protected. So you're, you've earned it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to present a motion to be approved for the use of this Law Enforcement Recruitment Retention Fund as presented.
I'll second that.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion or questions? Not seeing any of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume it passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. Brings us to consideration of Resolution number twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-nine, supporting the twenty-twenty-five legislative priorities for New Mexico counties. Mr. Stark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is an annual request that we received from New Mexico counties to consider a resolution supporting this year, the twenty-twenty-five legislative priorities. And so I'll quickly run through some of these. Commissioner Fortner, as you know, serves as our representative on that board and also is the president-elect for New Mexico County. So we can both answer any questions that you might have. Now, some of these items are carryover from previous years. Specifically, when you look at the very first item, HB two appropriations. So HB two is the, is the annual budget bill at the state level. And so New Mexico Counties is asking for additional and continued funding of the Detention Reimbursement Fund, courthouse funding to help counties that need assistance with providing that state mandated provision of space. Detention, recruitment, and retention. Of course, we've been a benefactor of that. Just recently, we accepted a grant agreement for our detention officers. Firefighter EMS Recruitment Fund. Likewise, we've been the recipient of that funding. And so asking for additional funding there. And then emergency medical services, asking for ten percent of the premium tax from the health insurance business at the state level to be dedicated to the EMS fund. And that, of course, would allow us to apply for funding as well relative to, to that. Seven hundred megahertz radios, that's not specific to us per se. That's more of the rest of the state, since we're not on that spectrum. But to authorize continued funding for monthly operational costs of that seven hundred megahertz system and to build out statewide interconnectivity infrastructure. And so some of these priorities sometimes directly relate to us, sometimes they don't. But, you know, this is the request from the entire board who votes on these priorities to bring these forth. Number two, equitable disclosure. And so that's to treat residential and non-residential property transfers equitably to allow for accurate valuation of non-residential real property. Information for that would be used for statistical and analytical purposes only. That was a legislative priority brought forth by the Assessor's affiliate. And of course, the number two priority for New Mexico Counties. Number three, EPRA improvements. So the Inspection of Public Records Act. There's been some changes made to that through time. New Mexico Counties, like Kent State, has been very helpful in that regard, along with the municipal league to, to, to make sure that, you know, information that may not be necessary for public disclosure is not disclosed. So this, this specific effort is, is related to exempting the disclosure of specific information and prohibits certain requests used to compromise and obstruct critical local government services. So when it comes to utilities, information and other information related to critical infrastructure in our community, such as dams and other, that type of, of infrastructure. So that's number three, a priority for New Mexico Counties. And number four is resources to support border-related humanitarian and crime efforts. This was, I think, specifically requested by the southern counties in our state to appropriate, and ask the state to appropriate five million dollars to counties for services provided to state and federal agencies to support border humanitarian, humanitarian and crime efforts. The funding would be used to combat drug and human trafficking networks, to coordinate with community services that provide food, transportation, shelter, and family location, and to coordinate with state and federal agencies on information sharing and coordination of state law enforcement activities. So of a multifaceted effort that's being requested related to that. So those are the priorities that the New Mexico Counties Board is, is putting forth this year. And, and I can stand along with Commissioner Fortner for any questions you might have related to those.
And I just wanted to make a comment about this process, how this process is done. It's a, it's a very rigorous process, and all thirty-three counties have a voice on what the legislative priorities are that we bring forward. We, all the, I, what I do is I talk to all of our local elected officials to get their input on what's being put forth as far as how it affects them and their departments. And then we also are giving detailed information on each of these priorities that we've discussed over a couple of meetings. And at our meeting, this is October, I believe it was in August, I believe. We, what we did, we met and we put all the priorities that have been brought forth by the New Mexico Counties on the, on the wall. And then we put sticky notes on each of the top three to, I think there's seven. So all of these things, like Mike said, there's a carryover. But all of this is voted on by the New Mexico County Board, all thirty-three counties. So it, there has to be a consensus on this. And if there's any division, then a count is taken. And so the majority would have to be in agreement with this. Again, this is something that impacts all the counties through our state. So it's not just relevant to one county. It has to impact all of us. And as you can see, number two and number three are newer on the list. And those are things that are really impacting what's happening in our county as well. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew this is a very rigorous process, and it's not random at all. So if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Questions, comments? I'll stand for a motion.
I move that we approve the number twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-nine, supporting the twenty-twenty-five legislative priorities for New Mexico counties.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion or questions? This requires marking or annotating how each commissioner votes. I propose we just do a voice vote. If there's nobody that opposes it, we can proceed that way. If, if, if there is opposition, then we can mark that down. Is that appropriate? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, it passes unanimously and can be recorded as, as such. Brings us to item number six, consideration of the twenty-twenty-five state and federal legislative requests for the county. Mr. Stark.
Yeah, thanks again, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, bringing this. Yeah, thanks again, Mister Chair. Commissioners, uh bringing this annual item to you as well. Uh, for the commission to set capital uh outlay priorities for the upcoming legislative session. Uh, you might note this is a little earlier than normal and that's because some of the timelines have been. Uh, increased uh on us. And so it probably ties out well with. Within the New Mexico County legislative priorities as well. So the twenty twenty five state legislative session this year will be a sixty day. Uh, session kicks off on January twenty first and ends on March twenty second. Uh, every year, um San Juan County submits various capital outlay requests to our. Our state legislative delegation and and we also submit um requests to uh the governor. As you might recall, uh, the way generally speaking, capital outlay works is. A third of the funding that's available goes to the House members. A third to the Senate members and a third uh to the governor. And so that's why there's two processes, one for. Uh, the legislative body and one for for the governor. Um, attached is our uh current twenty twenty six to twenty thirty uh infrastructure capital improvement plan and last year's. State legislative requests for your review and consideration. Uh, so these are the increased timeframes. December twentieth is the cutoff to submit capital outlay requests. Uh, to the governor's office and it's actually a week earlier. Uh, for requests to go uh to our state legislators and we have to go on staff to a capital outlay. Portal and and put those items in. And of course, depending upon uh the decision uh tonight by the commission. Uh, we would meet between now and then to to meet with our legislators and make sure they're fully a- aware of of your desires for the next session. Um, we also attached a copy of our twenty twenty four federal legislative requests and and generally speaking. Uh, doesn't have to be, but we try to keep those requests similar between the state and the feds. Um, so that we're have consistency in in the funding that we're requesting, but it doesn't have to be that way. And so staff would recommend, uh, you know, putting together uh your list of priorities and and priority order. And uh I could stand for any questions or or any information that you need to to work forward with and move forward with this process.
Anybody have any questions?
So we have this list and and we have to uh talk with the legislators in our area to support this. Is that correct?
Uh, Mister Chairman and Commissioner Todechin, yes, that's uh been part of our. Annual process is to make sure our legislators are well informed of the county commissions, desires. Are related to capital outlay. But at tonight's meeting, uh we actually need to develop of that list if you're ready. And so we can, staff can start working on putting together our legislative packets uh to meet with legislators and then also. To enter this uh information within the various portals for both the the governor and the legislature. Sure, that would be just the twenty six through third, right? Uh, Mister Chairman and Commissioner Lanier, I, we submitted or submitted, provided the infrastructure capital improvement plan. So that was the uh planning document that you all have previously approved. Uh, is is really just a. Uh, an, an opportunity for for generation of of capital outlay requests. Um, you know. But usually it it's highly recommended that projects that you're submitting on. Are on your capital uh improvement plan. Um, you you stand at a greater chance of not receiving funding if it's not. Doesn't mean that we haven't had projects before that aren't on this list. Uh, but it usually helps to solidify a request if it's backed within uh the projects that are on this, this document here. So.
Anyone? Any other questions?
Mister Chairman, I might um request unless you're wanting to adopt this list in full was our, was our legislative request. Uh, normally, you know, we ask for two or three projects that you would be um asking us to to submit on. And so um, I just recommending that if we need to talk about specific projects that you're interested in, unless you're wanting to submit. You know, the top two or three projects for for consideration.
So um, I, I definitely like the idea of the Flora Vista water wastewater construction. And I know, um. That the Crisis Triad Center, is that also part of? This two or, oh, it's down here. Okay, so, so I want to make sure that that's still. Top on our port priorities for my, for my opinion is uh those two.
I, I could see us giving you the top five even tonight, but I think there should be.
When do we need to have it to you, I think?
Would, would be my, my opinion. But I, you know, the top five are kind of set.
But I, I think this is the order in which we're going to request them. If we think that the. Request of fifteen million dollars for the Flora Vista wastewater construction project is feasible, then. You should request that if. Uh, I, I don't know as though that's a a feasible ask uh for one legis- legislative session. Uh, without having some grant funding in place or or otherwise. Uh, so I, I, I think what Mister Stark is asking for is a. A one through three or four order of requests. From this list. It doesn't have to necessarily be the order that's on this list.
So let me ask a question. If we um ask for funding for something on this list, it doesn't have to be fulfilled. That year, right? It can be an ongoing request. Is that right?
Uh, Mister Chairman and and Commissioner Fortner, it could be. Um, so, so depending upon the type of project that's requested. So if it's. Infrastructure, you know, building, roads, bridges, um, you have a four-year timeline uh to complete a project. So. You, you generally want to make a request and and I'll tell you, our legislative delegation is really good to work with. It tries to fund. Projects in full. Uh, they don't like to see um local entities uh that they're assisting. You know, put in a request for for half of the, of the funding this year and half next year. Cause there's a distinct possibility. Uh, that you don't get the funding next year and then you're not completing a project. In fact, I can tell you at the state level. Um, you know, saying a lot of correspondence coming out from some of the higher ranking members of the Senate and the House that. They're pretty frustrated about the amount of capital outlay that's sitting on the sidelines. Um, you know, we're um. Because of the way that we work with our legislators and our legislators work with us, we're able to request projects that we know. Um, it can be fully funded and can get done. And so, you know, a great example of that. You just cut the ribbon recently on the McGee Park Rabbit and poultry market. You know, we had a two-year timeframe from request of funding. To actual completion of the project and that's pretty um commendable knowing there's a usually a design and. Construction process that usually takes about a year. So from actually requesting the funding, getting a grant agreement. You know, hiring an architect, um finding a contractor, um it takes time. And so pretty, pretty, you know, expeditions process. So. Um, so yes, I, I would also suggest and and have some expectations that. You, you know, what of, what funding is available to our legislators? Um, you know, our best year ever from a capital outlay perspective. Is when we received three point two million dollars for the San Juan County Sheriff's Office helicopter. Um, does that, does it mean that we couldn't request more? Certainly. I think there's maybe a desire that we could, we could do that. And have our legislators work with us, but we'd, you know, they're going to want to see a project that they hope can be, can be fully funded. So you'd mentioned the. Crisis Triad Center, you know, that's a seven million dollar uh project. Um, that's probably one that would be a little ambitious, but I think one that they could probably, you know, gather up funding for. I was um in a conversation with, uh, just related to that project for your awareness. Um, you know, other entities request funding, obviously, the municipalities, the college, the chapters. Um, and uh San Juan Regional has historically requested funding and and it gets funneled through us since we're. The fiscal agent um and own taxpayers on the main campus there. So we can administer. Uh, capital at lay funding on their behalf. Uh, Mister Rounds, the CEO of San Juan Regional Medical Center said. They find the Crisis Triad Center to be such a um needed project, they would be willing to forego. Any capital outlay funding this year that they normally receive and contributed uh to a, a larger pot. So you Farmington, um visiting with their staff, I have, have said they would donate land uh for such a project. So. Um, and if that's one that you found to be favorable, uh there's some other contributing uh partners that were willing to help make that project. Uh, a reality. And and Flora Vista, I know was mentioned earlier, that certainly could be an opportunity. Uh, maybe not with our legislators, because we know there's funding constraints available uh relative to to what we can normally expect. But if you saw in your packet, the, the governor has lined out a specific. Capital outlay process for for projects that she would consider. Uh, and one of those. Is it has to be a top three priority on your ICIP list. And specifically uh funding that would be related to water and wastewater projects. So um that might be a. Project that you may want to say, okay, well, let's, let's give Flora Vista. Uh, on, you know, to the governor's process. And let's give some other project that we think we can get that meets, you know. The ability for our legislators to fund it to our legislators.
Yeah.
Um, that's just a thought and a strategy you might want to consider, but certainly this is a time to, to, to talk about all possibilities.
Okay.
What is, do you think, the like likelihood? And we can pick any of, for the legislative process, we can pick anything from. This entire list, correct? It doesn't matter that we have it projected for twenty third.
Correct, Mister Chairman, that is absolutely correct. It just has to be on, or it's highly recommend that it's on your ICIP list. So. You know, for example, uh, just as a reminder from, from last year, um, this body put forth, um. To three priority projects, um, road forty-nine ninety and we received funding for that for two million dollars. Uh, a fire, new fire apparatus for eight hundred thousand dollars, uh which we were not successful with. Um, number three was EMS station number six relocation for two million. We were not successful uh with that. Uh, and then ADA uh improvements. Uh, we were not specifically um. Successful this year with that, although we've received some other funding through this community development block grant project process. And then the fifth one was supporting the city of Farmington's request uh for improvements to Safety City, which is the. Joint Training Facility that we all use. It's owned by the city of Farmington. Um, but we wanted to support them in in their efforts of trying to find that funding. And that was not successful last year either. So. And the only project we were successful with last year was two million dollars for, for road forty-nine ninety. Sure, how many years has Safety City been on? Mister Chairman, Commissioner Lanier, I believe it's, this is the third year that it's been on there. And we have previously, um, the sheriff actually appeared before you to make a congressionally directed spending request. Um, gosh, that was probably three years ago and and it unfortunately was not uh successful. And and since that time. Uh, the city of Farmington has said, since, you know, they're the owners of the, of the property, that it would be uh more. More appropriate for them to to apply for the funding. I just, I, I asked a question because I feel like if, if we're ever going to dip into the governor's third. You know, her request is, it has to be on the top three, you know, bar. So I think we need to strategically place. Something there that she might. You know, that the governor would be willing to give to where. I don't want our top three to be something.
So how do we go about that distinctive, being distinctive on what we want to put on for the governor and then towards our legislators? Because the Flora Vista wastewater would go with the, what the governor's kind of directing towards, right? But that still has to be on our top priorities?
Oh, Mister Chairman, uh Commissioner Fortner, yes, um, based upon the guidelines that, that the governor's office has put out. Uh, via the memo in front of you, uh that, that would be, that would be an ideal project to submit. And you can certainly provide that direction to us. That's what we're hoping for tonight, is that you tell us, hey. Here are the projects we'd like to consider for our state legislators. Here's the projects we'd like to consider for our governor. And then, you know, collectively, what would we like to do for um any federal requests that we might have.
How long have we been looking at that Flora Vista wastewater? How long has that been looked at?
Uh, Mister Chairman and and Commissioner Fortner, I, I can say that since my start with the county in two thousand and six. We've been working on the Flora Vista wastewater project. Um, now, it, it's gone through multiple iterations of study. Engineering and design, but it's a hundred percent uh designs. The environmental documents would need to be updated because it's sat on the shelf now. Uh, for some time. Um, we, we did have funding. I, I, so going back to your question earlier about, well, could we request, you know. Um, portion of the funding and try to do that over multiple years. That was actually the strategy we were moving forward with uh back. Gosh, six, seven years ago, Senator Bill was very helpful back then, trying to put some funding together. We received our first grant of roughly three million dollars, as I recall. Um, but then ultimately, um, the state budget hit the, hit the skids and they started recalling. Unspent capital outlay money. So that's always something that, that could be a potential. And that's why. It's, it's really important, I think, that we submit requests for projects that we, we can get done and not put together multi-year. Requests.
Okay, so how do we do that with knowing that the governors put that? In that letter and, but yet we don't, we don't want to put that on the legislators.
Uh, Mister Chairman, Commissioner Ford, you could just submit the, the full uh cost estimate of fifteen million dollars and if. We're successful, great. If, if we're not, um, you know, maybe there's a plan to, to, to help. Fund that over multiple years. Uh, but if there was ever a year to pay me, consider that strategy, this might be the year uh when you. Governor was here for cabinet in your community, um, staff and myself attended. That event at Animus Elementary and we had a very robust conversation with Secretary Kenny. And was very interested and and wanting to see this project completed. So. Probably a good chance that, that this would be the year to, to put such a large request in and and see how it goes. We have not been the recipient. Of a direct funding from the governor's portion of capital outlay, San Juan County. Um, since I've been here, but that doesn't mean that, um, you know, this isn't the right time to strike.
It does seem to check a lot of the boxes of her requirements. It sure does. So.
Sure does.
Yep.
I would propose that we, uh, in the, the, the numbering or priority. Uh, that we have the Flora Vista wastewater construction. Uh, be a request that we make to uh the office of the governor. Uh, as it, it checks a lot of the requirements that she's listed in this letter. Uh, and I, I, I think it lines up with, with that. Uh, further, I would propose, uh, if, if, uh, do you think that the Crisis Triad Center is something that? Our legislators could pull off uh with the support of the hospital, with the support of the city of Farmington? Um, I, 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 I want to have a worthwhile project be considered. Uh, so I would propose that we list that as our number one. Um. Uh, just throwing that out there to the other commissioners. Uh, and then looking at the other two through five. Uh, to fill in, in whichever order behind uh the Crisis Triad Center. I, I think this commission has made it clear that, that mental health is, is a serious issue and, you know, we've had. Uh, I don't know how many studies or assessments done. That show that that's what needs to be done. So I would propose that we list that as our number one. It might be our pipe dream. Uh, but if we don't put it out there, we know it's not going to happen. So I would propose and and that's. The input that I want to give is that we have that as our number one. Uh, and then list the others as other commissioners see fit.
Mister Chair, I, I have a couple of questions, um, for Terry. On a statement, well, first of all, how many Crisis Triad Centers do we have in the state?
I don't know the exact, somewhere around, there's one in Santa Fe, the, and the one in Doniana. I don't know the stat, the status of it. And then Albuquerque, so.
I think Doniana closed, so I think we're done at two, is that correct, Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman Lanier? Santa Fe County and you have.
Doniana hasn't opened back up. Yep, okay.
Why did they close?
Mister Chair, uh, I'd be happy to address that. Um, very complicated answer.
Very complicated answer, I'll try to sum it up very, very precisely. Unrealistic expectations in terms of what it would cost to fund it.
Would be, would we be running into the same situation?
We we learned from their history. We, and the thing was, is now they're getting buy-in from their community. We have that buy-in from our community and and seeing what the need is here. So that's one thing we want to learn from them.
And not over skinned.
Right.
Don't make it too big.
And so then my second question is, and for Terry, I think, how much support, even if you would know? What kind of support do we have from the state legislator on a crisis? We are sent now.
Well, there from what I'm hearing in New Mexico counties, there's a lot of support. I can't identify which legislators, but it's the talk. And and it, yes, and it's been supported at the New Mexico county level as far as talking to legislators. And it's also part of the mental wellness that the governor's been advocating for as well.
Yeah, I just ask those because I think it'll, it'll help some of them, some of us move it up to the top.
Yeah.
Which is where I I would look.
Yeah, and I think what we saw from Anna's report too, this community health needs assessment. I think, you know, it keeps going back up to the top as far as what's needed here. And just all the conversations of where individuals in crisis end up and the alternatives right now. This is a better alternative to have a crisis drop in center.
Some of the other ones that we have to consider are the clerks' expansion and election security upgrades. I think it's, you know, if the if the crisis triage center isn't feasible for the the legislators, a project with a smaller price tag might be something that they'd be interested in, especially seeing and recognizing that we already have a million dollars of funding in place. I would propose that we make that the number two legislative request. Doesn't seem to be anybody else really jumping in, so.
Where do we need to put the Florida Vista wastewater?
I I think that would be outside of the scope of the legislative request.
So either just the lady. It's not governor, okay, just so it's understood, okay.
And I I think it's always important to put some smaller ticket items on there and don't want to forget about our fire, fire department. I'd say fire apparatus number three. And.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, what amount would you like to request there? And and, you know, in our list, it's eight hundred thousand dollars for for the full price tag of a of an engine.
Chief, how much you want? Oh, I'm sorry. Is the apparatus still roughly the same amount?
Eight hundred thousand.
Uh, we're closer to about a million for a pump right now.
And can we ask for a different amount than what's on our ICIP?
Mr. Chairman, certainly, that's been done before. You know, any amount we receive just helps to offset our our costs for replacing apparatuses that comes due for replacement. So, you know, you didn't, you wouldn't necessarily have to fund the full value of that replacement cost.
And so we show, we showed the same one in twenty twenty, I lost, dang it, in twenty twenty eight. But that would be a different fire unit, correct? So we just keep it on the list so that it's always there.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Lanier, that's correct. Because we know we're going to have that replacement need every year. We're aging out equipment and and so we we done, taking the same approach when it comes to road improvements. We we keep that on there as a placeholder. If for some reason, you know, say our legislators have a hundred thousand dollars, they they don't know where to spend. We'll put it right here for for county road improvements. We'll match it with our labor and equipment and give you more bang for your buck. And more importantly, help chip seal and improve more roads here in San Juan County. So we we kind of keep those as placeholders so that we're ready if we need to maneuver during the session. Because you just never know how funding streams change or or priorities change or a legislator wants to help a certain area. We we make make sure this list is set to do that.
And it's on there twice.
Right.
So two different, it's not the two different ones, it's the same.
Correct. It's it's replacing that the pumper or an engine.
Okay.
Every year.
Then my other comment was the senior citizen facility for Orgali Blanco. That's a two hundred thousand dollar pass. So maybe that one we can leave in our legislative.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lanier, what I might point out on that, it's actually on our list because there's a separate infrastructure capital improvement plan for senior centers. Ms. Murray puts that in every year and it's on there so that we can validate that it's on our list. But but actually, we receive usually all the entire amount we request every year to assist with kitchen equipment or renovation projects or vehicles, so.
Through a different process.
We do. And so I I that's why that's on the list because we were required to have it on there to show that it's it's a priority for the county. So my suggestion would be you could probably allocate dollars elsewhere. We're still going to have the dollars we need for our seniors.
So we have a triage center, election security upgrades, fire apparatus, is that the list you have so far?
So far, I have those top three for our legislative.
And I would propose, and and I'm not sure the amount to request, any amount they're willing to up to the three point one for the ADA. That's always something that we're working on and always something that if they have a a smaller amount left over, they don't know what to do with. Hey, put it towards that. I don't know if there's a way to articulate that request.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we've done that in the past, and so I, that's been a priority for the commission to help fund some ADA improvements. And so we provide that as a kind of flexible option to legislators. And and we're getting very close. Mr. Smith has done a great job with some of the ADA requests and parts and facilities and knocking these projects out. And so we're, we're getting to the point, it won't be this year, but maybe next year I can report that we have one hundred percent of one hundred and twenty facilities in San Juan County, including building and parking structures are one hundred percent ADA.
I would agree with that, but.
That's awesome.
Chairman Bix did say.
Okay. That'd be number four.
Let me ask a question about the EMS station. How long has it been in need of something different been done with that? I was thinking about response time for individuals in our county.
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Fortner, that that's been a request on the list too for three years running now. Currently, it, you know, we have a, we, a San Juan Regional Medical Center has a leased property off of Farmington Avenue. And so that's where that station is is located, twentieth street, Farmington Avenue area. So it's kind of supporting the 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 heart of Farmington per se in terms of, you know, being able to move north, south, east, west, and and that general middle area of town.
Is that the one that moved up Martha Vartens?
Mr. Chairman and, or Mr. Chairman, yes, that property was being explored. Unfortunately, we found out just two weeks ago that that desire to acquire that property is following through. So we're, actually tomorrow's EMS Oversight Committee will be reviewing another property for consideration that we would evaluate with San Juan Regional Medical Staff and.
This is the person who's currently on sixteen and a half street or something.
Correct, that's where the existing facility is located, that's right. The property that's being proposed is in the general area, so we, you know, we probably want to bring that back to you at a later date. But it's still a priority to move out of the leased facility that doesn't have adequate facilities and 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 bay areas. So we we certainly like to see.
Because they can't plug it in to keep it warm because then they'll.
They can, yeah, a circuit breaker will prop. So it 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 has some nuances is what we we call that, that's the official term. Mr. Yes.
So that on the ADA improvements, is there no money, federal money or anything else that we can pay?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lanier, actually, there is, and we've been very successful. The state of New Mexico, through the Community Development Block Grant Program, has allowed that to be a project that doesn't need to to go through the normal vetting process relative to determining, you know, economic needs. And so we're actually submit on that directly. And and last year, we were the recipient of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we actually are waiting our new grant agreement for another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so we actually have the ability to continue to submit on that year after year or or project after project. Because they generally don't let you submit if you already have an active project. So that is another funding source that certainly could be utilized and and not necessarily, you know, take away from any capital outlay requests you have.
Where do you have one through?
We're closing the other one.
Number five. So I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that that it's very important that we keep, like, the ADA, you know, in our top five or six anyway. Or when we go out for outside funding, right?
Yep.
And it looks good, we go to applying.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lanier, yes, that that's, I'm sure the strategy, well, certainly what we proposed and you all approved to keep it high on the list so that it's known to potential grant grantors that that this is an important, high priority project for us, which it is. We certainly want to see all of our facilities a hundred percent accessible. Been a goal of ours for a few years now, but we're almost there, which I'm happy to report.
So you're thinking forego the legislative requests this year and just do the grant funding and and choose a different one?
No, I I think it's important to keep it up on the list. I just, I don't know. I just don't know that it's that hot of a topic down there. So, you know, maybe.
Well, we've been successful in asking for road funding and that seems to be, and that's going to save the county money. So I don't know if we. One year, I know that when we made these legislative requests, it was proposed that we just do one or two or three. And it didn't make sense to me and we asked for four or five and and we ended up getting more funding. So and and I think it's important to give the legislators different levels or values of different projects. Because they they have a big puzzle they're putting together as well. And if we give them enough pieces or enough projects that have different values of funding, they're able to fit those pieces together. And so I I I think it's important to give them different projects that have different values so that we can get as much funding as possible. Is is the strategy that I've I've wanted to see implemented in the past.
But they have six hundred thousand left over.
They they look for.
We look on our list and here we go.
Mr. Chair, I guess I'd be remiss if I didn't ask about the bridge eighty one eighteen. I know I'd like to keep that in the forefront, but I don't know. Uh, Mike, could you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McDaniel, that is on the forefront, as you might recall, a couple of commission meetings ago. You, this body approved a submission of a federal grant application that we weren't successful with last year. Mr. Perrell had put that together, but we we actually had the opportunity to to sit and visit with the federal funding agency at at the federal level. And we made those improvements that they had recommended and resubmitted for that grant again to fund preliminary design of of the bridge eighty one eighteen. So on forty four fifty. But, you know, it it relative to some of the other projects and trying to match it up with even the governor's priorities. You know, there there wasn't anything noted here that indicated a high priority for bridges or roads. And so that's why I pointed out that there was a a preference directed towards drinking water and wastewater facilities. Doesn't mean we couldn't submit. I mean, certainly, we can submit anything we want, but, you know, the webinar that staff attended, including myself, they were very specific from the governor's office saying, these are the projects we'll consider. So if you don't submit a project that doesn't meet, you know, these aspects, we're we're more than likely not going to take any action on it. It's going to sit in the file over here.
So that bridge wouldn't necessarily need to be in the top five because it's already being applied for by a grant? Is that what you're saying?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner McDaniel, yes. So it'd probably be wise for us to wait to see how that grant opportunity turns out. And and, you know, of course, that that may be after the legislative session is complete. In fact, I don't know if Mr. Perrell knows when they plan to review and 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 award those projects. Art, so.
And Commissioner McDaniel, I know that oftentimes legislators are more apt to fund projects that have already gone through design and have have all of those aspects worked out versus a project that needs to go from zero. So if we can get the design and all of that funded through a grant, it gets that project one step closer versus trying to hit the grand slam with design all the way through the end of the the project. So it sounds like, you know, they're doing what they what they need to as far as getting funding to get that design process going. I don't know, I I know it's frustrating, but things always move a lot slower than we want them to. But it sounds like they're they're doing what they need to as far as looking at getting some design money to get that that project started.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, would you mind just recapping? What the direction here for that?
What I proposed and and again, if any commissioner wants to jump in and change the order or propose a different order. But I I I would ask that the crisis triage drop in center be our number one legislative request for funding. Uh, number two being the expansion, security upgrades for the for the building here for secure, for the election security. Number three being the replacement fire apparatus. And I'm okay leaving that at the eight hundred thousand because it it gives us that the the differences in in amount requests. And it it sounds like we're getting adequate funding through other grant processes with the ADA improvements. So I don't know as though we put that on the list, but I think we definitely need to find at least one more, whether it be road improvements or the EMS station relocation. I'll leave that to some of the other commissioners to come up with some, you know, we're at two point five million for the the clerk's office expansion, eight hundred thousand for the the fire apparatus. I don't know if we want to do the EMS station six or the county road improvements twenty twenty six.
I'd like to see the EMS put up there just because it needs attention and they can't do what they need to keep that truck and warm or functional for patients. And it's really important in their response to what happens there. If they use the microwave, then it blows a breaker. If they put the plug in the truck, it blows a breaker. So it's just, it's in major need.
So have that as item number four. And then is the county road improvements twenty twenty six? That's not road twenty twenty six, that's just general fund for asking.
Our road improvements that we would like to make.
Our nick signs, correct. Okay. So I would propose that we make that number five as as kind of a fill in if they. Um, so I would propose that we make that number five as as kind of a fill-in if they happen to have an extra million dollars lying around.
And Mister Chairman, if I if I could on the EMS Station Six uh relocation. Uh, to 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 follow up on your your comments regarding trying to provide some flexibility to lower amounts. For legislators to fund, um, and we're not, that that project's still kind of in the. The very early.
We don't know how much it's gonna be.
Uh, might might I suggest uh to the body that that we look at uh funding for acquisition of of land and design? Uh, or just design, uh designs usually ten percent of the total project cost, so that would be two hundred thousand dollars. Um, you know, we don't really have land per se identified, as I mentioned, as uh the property we were pursuing fell through. So maybe just two hundred thousand for design, that puts us.
Do we have to list the amount or whenever we send it to legislators?
Mister Chairman, generally they like to know how much is being requested, so they can kind of fit that in to your point about. Making the puzzle pieces fit, and they've got funding from the municipalities, colleges, chapters and trying to.
Are there?
Together.
Are there options that are gonna be proposed as potential land soon?
Uh, Mister Chairman, that's our hope to be able to bring something to you here in the very near future to consider.
Would we be able to amend this to not only ask for design but also land if if uh. That comes, if if an option for land comes up?
Uh, Mister Chairman, certainly if it's before December thirteenth, we have to have the form submitted to to. The Santa Fe, so we can leave that as a placeholder that's, you know, to be determined, um, of course, you all are indicating with what you're proposing. That that be the number four uh project, and so. That certainly could be done. And then Mister Chairman, uh was there still a desire to want to submit a separate request? Um, uh via the governor's funding for for the Florida Vista project in full?
That's what I would propose the commission to do.
And Mister Chairman, just to clarify, did did you wanna just go with the four legislative requests? Or did you wanna add uh road improvements as well?
I would say we just throw the road improvement on there and in an amount that. If, do you think the million dollars is adequate or? You can come up with a project?
Mister Chairman, we could, we. Mister Chairman, we could even, in in years past, we we've even, as I mentioned earlier, if. Um, we haven't been the recipient of the road funding in some time, but a hundred thousand dollars uh materials only. And the county providing the labor and the equipment and legislators really like that, cause it shows we have some. Some skin in the game and and, you know, a hundred thousand from materials goes a pretty long way when you're chips here on the road, not as much as it used to. But that may be a a a smaller amount that might kind of fit in where they're trying to, you know. Have some spare change, uh, if you wanna consider a hundred thousand spare change.
You think that's a a good strategy?
It's worked before.
So four is or is not EMS Station Six?
So far on the the list we're proposing it potentially number four, if you want to change it, you can. Discuss it and. And shift priorities, this this is open for anybody to. Propose or shift or.
I would go with that as proposed one through five, I think.
So EMS will be four.
For two hundred and. Two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand?
Right.
Two hundred thousand. Two hundred thousand for design and.
Well, that probably covered design and I think it covered my best.
What was, what's mine? Roads. So that would be.
And so you're thinking. Hundred thousand for. Material only, county to provide labor.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I I think that might be a nice.
Easier, easier ask than just a million dollar thought.
Yeah, given some of the larger amounts ahead of it, uh, I think it'd be. It it may be tough to fund some of those or in full, so that would give legislators an option to.
To find a way to. Kind of look at it as the theory, I know everybody's seen the putting rocks in a jar. Or, you know, putting the sand in the jar first versus putting the rocks in and then filling the sand in. Some of these smaller projects seem like the sand to where we get more in the jar.
So. So you just need a directive or?
We need a motion, I think.
Mister Chairman, we need a motions. Okay.
I move that we. That we put the twenty twenty-five state and federal legislative requests. Put the triage crisis center one. The clerk's office two. The fire apparatus three. The EMS, moving the EMS station for. Possible land purchase.
For.
Design.
Design or planning.
Planning and design. And number five for road improvements.
This is number four, Station Six?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Two hundred thousand.
And two hundred thousand for the. Just in design of the EMS.
And a hundred thousand materials only?
Hundred thousand materials only.
And Mister Chairman, Commissioner Lanier, uh eight hundred thousand for the fire apparatus and two point five million for the. Clark's office, and then seven million for the crisis triage center is on the, for the ICIP list.
Yes.
And then Mister.
Yes, I'm hoping that it will be clear in the recording and they can write down the motion, but the the motion was clear, it was just. Um, they're gonna need to decipher it a little bit.
We've got it.
Okay, thank you.
Only thing that I wanna just make sure is uh nothing was mentioned about the Flora Vista water.
It is a motion.
Do we need a separate one?
Yeah, but they should combine it together, one would be, these are your top five legislative uh priorities. And then for the executive branch of the governor, uh here's our one priority for the governor per that fits the requested. Uh, you know, projects from them.
Um, Mister Chairman, Commissioner Lanier, you can tack it on the end if you'd like, or or just do a new motion for that one separately. For the governor's requests.
Governor's request has to be in.
Mister Chairman, Commissioner Lanier, and yes, that if you're considering Flora Vista wastewater, it is, it's number one actually on our list. So. So it qualifies. For the executive branch governor's funding.
So if I look at it, this is a completely separate document in our rankings.
Right.
And we can request for funding from any of these, and we just give it priority for funding requests only. So don't get hung up on the one through five on the ICIP. We can request funding in any order that we want, as long as they're on the ICIP.
I get that, I just don't know how to word it in the motion.
How should we say it, Joe?
Well, I, um, Mister Chairman, Commissioner Lanier, I think the first motion was good, I think the second motion. Uh, you could just word it for the governor's uh list would be the Flora Vista wastewater construction phase one, which is number one on our. List.
Let's just do one motion at a time. Is there a second?
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any, uh, those in favor, uh, say aye, aye, any opposed? Uh, not hearing any opposition, I uh presume it passed unanimously. Is there another motion?
So on the next motion. We don't need to rank them at all, we just need to say the one. Just the one. All right. So just, so Mister Chairman, I move that we. Lead the Flora Vista Water Construction Phase One under the governor's.
Capital Outlay, cast, outlay request.
It's been moved that we uh submit the Florida or Flora Vista wastewater construction project to the. Twenty twenty-five capital outlay request to the Office of the Governor, is there a second?
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? But not hearing any uh those in favor, say aye, aye, any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume it passed unanimously, uh, that completes item number six. Uh, brings us to report from our county manager.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman and Commissioners, just two quick items for you tonight. Uh, I would like to uh recognize our second biggest day ever in household hazardous waste, Mr. Mastis and his team. Uh, this past Saturday, we had, uh, and you you might recall, we we accept uh household hazardous waste for. For the county, Kirtland and Bloomfield, the reason being is Aztec and Farmington have a program through. Uh, their uh waste provider, which is waste management that they can do curbside, so. Uh, we direct folks that show up that live within uh those cities to to take advantage of that program. Uh, but a hundred and twenty-one cars uh visited uh the parking lot out here, eighty-five for the county, fourteen for Kirtland, twenty-two for Bloomfield. Um, this is second only to last uh the spring where we had a hundred and twenty-four uh cars, so it. It was part of our Make It Shine initiative, you know, this is just one of the uh components to that, uh where she approved the. Kaylinda Grants and being able to hire a. Beautification uh coordinator for San Juan County and to to assist with more cleanup efforts here, so. I just wanna point that out, it's it's just one of the other programs that we have and. And kudos to everybody involved in making that happen, including the local LEPC volunteers who come out to assist. Uh, with that endeavor, uh, grants, we continue to. Um, do well on the grant department, um, so alternative sentencing was successful. Uh, with a grant uh through the US Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance. Uh, to be part of a nine-month planning initiative to support jails to increase access to opioid use disorder treatment options for individuals. Within the facility and or in collaboration with community-based providers, both their treatment during incarceration. And upon their return to the community, so it's the planning initiative to build bridges to increase access. Uh, was the grant that we're the recipient of, and uh this will be an interesting one, because as you all know. Um, we have the state's only jail-based substance abuse treatment center. In the state, right here, San Juan County, uh, we've been providing DWI. Um, jail-based services uh for twenty-nine years now, I think I had to uh verify that with Ms. Mitchell. And uh, and of course, the um access program, which handles the substance abuse treatment uh for for women. That's what we currently are able to offer because of space constraints, uh, but that's been in place since two thousand and six, so. Uh, this might one be be one of those rare uh studies and and grant opportunities where we're we're sharing more. About what we're doing than we're learning from other communities, but we we're so happy to be. Part of this initiative and and to be able to participate in this, I think it will be very beneficial to us and all the best practices that are out there. Um, but 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 we we are blessed in this community to have such a program. Uh, available here and uh as Ms. Kretzky uh indicated, just the collaboration that happens. Um, within the county but outside of the county to make programs like this. Um, make a difference in people's lives is is pretty special, so just wanna share that with you, another grant win for for the San Juan County team. That's all I have for you tonight.
All right, any reports from elected officials?
Mister Chair, um, there's a a new flick called Res Ball.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, they're gonna show it free at Henderson Hall tomorrow at six P M.
And there's local actors in it too.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Any other elected officials have uh reports?
I was just gonna recognize that we had the the chili harvest Fiesta in Farmington last weekend and. Myself and. Cause he got up and left, so.
Sam Gonzalez.
Oh. We were, we were judges together and, oh my God, we had so much fun. And I had no idea what I was getting into. It is so hard to pick between the chili, yeah, I mean, it was, I thought I just went in there and find the favorite one and be done. No, it's not like that, so eat a lot of ice cream after. And then uh, um, the next, the next one was the uh City of Aztec. Had their Fiesta Days and uh or Fall Harvest, what do they call that one, the Fall Fall Fiesta? And the the Duesenberry Car Show, Car Show, and it was awesome. I I hope you guys could go through there, I've seen several several folks there, but I I bet they had uh over a hundred different cars there. And it was, it was quite amazing for a small town like Aztec, it was really good to see. People take a break from election season, get outside and. And enjoy, so I wanted to give both of those crews some kudos.
Chairman, and members of the commission, I'd just like to give you a update on early voting. And I appreciate that we had at least one commissioner vote and it's included in these numbers that I'm going to provide. Um, so far, as of the numbers through today, we're at three thousand one hundred and forty-three. So, we all remember twenty twenty, right? In one way or another, obviously, um, for those of you that were here during election time, you remember the lines. Um, and the restrictions that we were under, so compared to twenty twenty, same time. We had three thousand three hundred and forty-three. So we are, we are two hundred behind where we were in twenty twenty, I think that's incredible. Under, if we remember, um, just all of it, all of the restrictions, the lines, the. Uh, the people that were wanting to get out and vote, we did for twenty twenty send out over ten thousand ballots the first day. We've only sent out three thousand and sixty-one ballots for this election. So hopefully the trend will continue, um, all of our alternate sites. And yes, I look at the newspaper, um, I I know that we had a request for some publicity in that respect. Um, we've, we have done our publications, um, in the newspapers, the radios, all of that, but. I just wanna make sure that voters understand that all of our alternate sites open this coming Saturday. Our hours on Saturday are from nine to six, and then um regular hours for all alternate sites. Monday through Friday are from nine to seven, um, we are increasing that. Then the nine o'clock is earlier than we have in the past, we're doing that for this election, the additional two hours. Um, so I think it's important for the voters to to know that, our office will be open. Um, as it always has been, from seven A M. to seven P M. Monday through Friday. And then the same hours, the nine to six on Saturdays, and just if I may, our alternate sites include. Uh, Bloomfield Cultural Center, Farmington um Museum, Gateway Park, the Farmington Library. Shiprock Consolidated C C S D and then um Newcombe Fire Station. Thank you.
Any other elected official reports? Open it up to department heads, any reports from department heads? Brings us to comments input from the general public, comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes and to subjects the commission has not previously discussed. Or formal action has not been taken, no formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. Are there any comments from the public? Not seeing anybody clamoring for the the lectern, uh, and having exhausted the.